Do, round number one.
Before we begin tonight, I'd just like to have a moment's silence for all the victims in Las Vegas. And also there's Humbleville Police Officer, who was hit the other day and passed away this afternoon, Louis "Rob" Miggio, R.A.M.I.G.I.O. He came to Newburyport many, many times. He was here on the motorcycle thing. He was just here on the Riverfest. He loved the city. So, remember Louis in it. And I thought saying also the victims in Las Vegas.
Thank you. By diligence to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. City Clerk do the roll call for the City Council meeting October 10th, 2017.
Counselor Cameron.
President.
Counselor Connell.
President.
Counselor Cronin.
Present.
Counselor Earl.
Present.
Counselor Agarman.
Here.
Counselor Junta.
Present.
Counselor Tanta.
Here.
Counselor Vogel.
Present.
Counselor Z.
Present.
Counselor President O'Brien.
Here.
Light file item?
The only light file item is the communication from the mayor. Counselors will see on their desk that there is some backup material for some of the zoning matters.
Public comment?
It's better to have a copy than mine.
Tom Colter John?
Tom Colter John, 64 Federal Street, co-president of the Newburyport Preservation Trust, Mr. President and members of the City Council. The trust strongly supports the two proposed zoning amendments we hope you will vote on tonight. The zoning change from R3 to R2 is an important step in helping to preserve our historic neighborhoods. An inclusionary affordable housing ordinance is long overdue. It is our hope that these two amendments will help to relieve the intense development pressure our historic neighborhoods are under and restore some of the balance to Newburyport's traditional economic diversity. The trust would like to thank the following counselors for sponsoring these amendments: Robert Cronin, who sponsored both amendments; Jared Agarman; Sharif Zaid; Charles Tontar. Many of the counselors here tonight spoke positively about these amendments at a recent public hearing. We urge the entire City Council to vote for both amendments. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rita Mahalik?
Rita Mahalik, 53 Warren Street, Newburyport. I'd like you to know that I am very much in favor of the two zoning amendments before the City Councilors tonight, and I hope that they are voted on favorably tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for coming. Jenny Donahue?
Good evening, Counselors, Council President and City Clerk Rich Jones. I'm just here to quickly comment on the ordinance change brought forth by Counselor Zaid in regards to special event compliance with ADA regulations. I understand this will go to committee, but I just wanted to offer, the Newburyport Commission on Disabilities would be more than happy to provide any kind of resources, advice, and input on that forthcoming ordinance when it is in committee. So, thank you for bringing that forward, Sharif. We all very much appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. Judy Timman?
Good evening, Council President and City Counselors. Judy Timman, 39 Lime Street, and I'm Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust, and I'm here to speak in favor of the inclusionary zoning ordinance. And also, I'd like to thank the two sponsoring City Council members, Counselor Cronin and Counselor Agarman. And also to point out that what you see before you tonight is definitely a joint effort amongst the two sponsoring Council members, the Affordable Housing Trust members, and members of the planning staff in particular, Kate Newhall Smith, who worked pretty hard on the language that you see before you. So, it was definitely an effort that we all worked very well together on the amendment. I again thank both Councilors for bringing this forth, and I'm hoping that it does pass. It will go a long way in helping us to preserve more and create more affordable housing, a much needed for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it for public comment? Go to the mayors' comment.
Good evening, President O'Brien, members of the City Council, members of the public that are here tonight. The Intermodal Facility Garage, the big package for construction of the garage and Intermodal Facility has been sent to Project Dog, should be released within the next 24 hours. Filed sub-bids are due on the first, with the general contractor bids due on November 15th. The next meeting of the Intermodal Advisory Group is scheduled for tomorrow night, October 11th, at 7:00 PM in the police station conference room. Richard Jones, Jordy Vining, Paul O'Brien, and I went to meet with staff in Dover, New Hampshire. I think I mentioned we were going to do this road trip to see their garage. It's a 327 space garage, and we discussed construction, maintenance, and operations. It was a very, very informative meeting. We are continuing to work with the final tenant in the old Fitness Factory site and anticipate there will be a relocation shortly as their new lease begins on October 15th. The ad hoc recreational marijuana group, the first meeting is scheduled for Friday, October 13th, at 10:00 AM in the mayor's conference room on the second floor. Our task is to identify area or areas in the city that could support cultivation and retail. We are beginning to receive inquiries from businesses interested in developing a cultivation site in the business park. Please recall, as a community that voted affirmatively to legalize recreational marijuana, we are required to support a site in the community as written into the new law. The superintendent search committee, we are still accepting letters of interest and resumes to serve on the search committee for the new superintendent. Letters will be accepted until October 20th. The school committee voted unanimously at our last meeting to select New England School Development Council as a consultant team to lead the search. We had a very positive experience with them in our last search as they brought us Susan Baccaro. I included the website there for you if you're interested in learning a little bit more about NASDAQ. The Merrimack River Beach Alliance, since the completion of the repairs to the north and south jetties, erosion patterns have significantly changed. The MRBA has been awaiting the Army Corps of Engineers DOT study, and we anticipate a final draft within the next months. There is some indication at this point that the DOT study is not going to identify that there are problems from the repair of the jetties with the new erosion patterns, but that is to be seen. More to come on that later. We are meeting with Chris Charros, captain and owner of The Captain's Lady, and who will be completing another small dredge off the Pear and Plum Island, and we are looking to see if we are able to move the sand to the beach adjacent to North Reservation Terrace. Federal and state dredging programs continue to be discussed at the MRBA meetings. The Great Marsh Regional Coastal Adaptation Plan, this was a really, really important piece of work that we were involved in. It's a 240-page document roughly that involved a study of Newburyport, Salisbury, Newbury, Rowley, Ipswich, and Essex, and was funded by Hurricane Sandy Coastal Resiliency Competition through the National U.S. Fish and Wildlife Foundation. The draft report provides details of each community's vulnerabilities and adaptation strategies. Molly Ettenborough, Julia Goffertson, John Eric White, Diane Gagnon, and members of our ad hoc resiliency group, as well as storm sheriffs, contributed to this study. We are also the recipient of a state municipal vulnerability program grant that will advance actionable strategies from this study. Our team has selected Melissa Gadoes to facilitate this process as she was a key leader in facilitating this Sandy Grant study. Once the draft of the Great Marsh Study is finalized, a copy will be posted on the city website. This is very important work to protect our city, our assets, and our future. A joint meeting, the Great Marsh Symposium, is scheduled for November 9th at 1:00 PM at Woodman's in Essex, and I will send you all formal invitations if you attend. Hale Street, residents from the west end of the city have been requesting assistance. We've all been receiving these emails and phone calls, making access on Hale Street safer for students who walk and bike to school. As we've talked about and as I've sent information to you, the road is very narrow and surrounded by wetlands and ledge, but I am organizing the Hale Street Task Force to work with DPS, resident City Councilors, hopefully from Ward 5 and Ward 6, to evaluate all options here. I anticipate meetings should begin in mid-November. I also wanted to point out that there is a new parking area recently added to Hale Street. This was created by UFP. This was the company that moved from Georgetown to the old Cabot site, and this was part of their mitigation to expand that particular site. It provides access to the trailhead at Cooper Farm. Clipper City Rail Trail, a quick update there. We had anticipated the EPA requirement to do additional samplings behind the wastewater treatment plant would start this week. It's been postponed another week. We have received some complaints recently from Bromfield Street residents who are concerned about the speed of construction vehicles. This has been addressed, but certainly encourage residents to continue communicating with Jordy or my office if there continues to be concerns there. Inclusionary zoning, I couldn't agree more with the people who spoke during public comment. This is something that we have worked on in the Affordable Housing Trust as developers came to meet with us, and we would encourage that they add affordable housing to their projects. This way, it becomes operationalized into law, and I'm very, very pleased that you're doing this. I would ask that you also take a look at Andy Port's recommendation on the area median income standard, which is recommended by HUD, as well as Housing and Community Development. One other piece that's not on your update is that, but I know it's on your agenda tonight, Do Run Squires, these residents in that area of the city have been waiting very patiently for their roads to be paved, as well as a lot of other residents in the city, as you know, with only $519,000 a year to put towards roads. It doesn't go very far, but we are trying to prioritize. So, I've asked DPS to do an assessment and give us a price on how we could, and a plan so we could start at least a mill and grind in that area during the next construction season. We are also working with the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission on updating our affordable housing inventory and options, and a meeting was held, I believe, last week to begin conversations about updating this plan. The master plan, as you know, it's been a very, very long process, and the completion of this plan, as I've mentioned to you before, is necessary for us to complete the zoning rewrite. Andy Port is completing the edits on the action plan. I believe that's the last piece that you've all collaborated on, and it's anticipated that it will be reviewed and hopefully approved by the planning board next week. If that all goes well, I assume it will come before you at your next City Council meeting for your vote. Last week, we had a vigil for the victims in Las Vegas. I thanked the counselors who participated, and many of you read names of the victims. And I was quite surprised by the number of clergy who were there who also said it's time for a call to action. Tomorrow, I'm meeting with the Interfaith Council and with collaboration from MOMS, Demand Action for Gun Sense, and supporting this effort. There will be more information coming forward on what the clergy's call to action will be for the city. Would also like to recognize the Newburyport Education Foundation and the Institution for Savings. Together, again, they have contributed in great ways to our city as well as our schools. Their latest was a dedication a couple of weeks ago for new lighting and sound at the auditorium of a Newburyport High School. Wanted you also to know that you had approved in the FY18 budget for a part-time, excuse me, events coordinator. We have hired Christina Manning, who started two weeks ago in this position. A couple of important dates coming up. On October 19th, we have scheduled another new resident meeting at the Senior Community Center, and on October 20th, there is the dedication of the Veterans Memorial Plaza during halftime at the Newburyport versus North Reading Football Game. Sorry. And just a reminder to everyone, the last date to register to vote is October 18th for the November 7th election. My apologies. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions?
Time's at meeting on the 19th. Time's a meeting on the 19th, you know?
I will get that too. I think it's 7:00. 6:30, sorry.
Thank you.
Okay. Department heads will be there. We've put together and updated that brochure we passed out last time, so of course you're all invited to attend. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll take the consent agenda.
The consent agenda this evening consists...
Excuse me. Sorry, can I request that Communication 111-10-10-17? Be full about a consent agenda?
So, it consists this evening of the approval of the minutes of September 25th. There are no transfers. There are now, there's one communication, Communication 112, which is a walk for MS, which would occur in Newburyport on 4/28/2018, as to be referred to public safety. There is one appointment, first reading, Appointment 62 Harrison Lowell Whitney, Jr., 23 Low Street, Newbury, Special Police Officer.
Motion to approve? Move on. Legal agenda? Need motion for mayor's update?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Take Communication 111.
Communication 111 is a petition for road repairs and repaving. Squires Glenn. There are additional photos in the clerk's office if one would like to see them.
A motion to refer to Neighborhoods and City Services? Second.
All not in favor? All in favor? Pose. Okay, thank you.
No discussion?
Yeah.
If I could. Thank you, Mr. President. This is my ward, so I just want to take a second to address this. This neighborhood here, as you can see, hasn't been paved for 32 years. So, these streets have not been addressed since the day this neighborhood was built. We have some real streets that are in distress, and I just didn't want this to go by without a mention. I know it's, I'm happy to hear the mayor bring it up in her comments, but you know, if you take the time, especially the Outlodge guys, to take a ride down through this neighborhood, you'll find that Wildwood Drive has built-in speed bumps, except they're not up-speed bumps, they're down. So, when you ride it, yep, they go like this. It's very interesting. The end of Fox Run Drive is very broken up. You know, when you talk to the residents down there, when you get down to the dead end, that road has just had it. So, we have 32 years of not maintaining these roads, and the neighbors just finally got together, and they want to see some action. So, anyway, that's my thoughts. One of my neighborhoods, so I just wanted to talk a little bit about it and let you know what's happening. Thank you.
Move on to appointments.
It's the second reading, Appointment 61 Tanya Hartford, 22 Jackson Street, to the planning board till January 31st, 2019.
Motion to approve?
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Earl?
Yes.
Counselor Tanta?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor President O'Brien?
Yes. The one for orders. Order 54.
Order 54 is a stop sign order for Marlboro Street at the intersection, southwesterly drivers, at the intersection of Marlboro Street and High Street, submitted by Counsel Z.
Motion to refer to public safety? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You sure there wasn't a sign there before?
I checked the code. No, nothing in the City Council, nothing in the county code anyways.
Pretty sure it was there, but...
Got a new one.
Just put him up. I've lived in that area for a while, like, I'm pretty sure there was. Go to the next one?
Order 55. No person shall park any vehicle on the following streets. 59th Street, restriction, 59th Street, northwesterly side of the street, from vehicular endpoint of 59th Street as accessed from Northern Boulevard to a point 20 feet towards Northern Boulevard. No parking anytime. Submitted Counselor Z.
Motion to refer to public safety? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Move on to ordinances. Second reading, ordinance...
Ordinance number seven, second reading. This is a zoning ordinance changing a table from not permitted to special permit. First reading was last September 25th, submitted by Counselor Tontar.
Motion to approve on second reading?
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
It's a motion to approve, ordinance number seven. Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Earl?
Yes.
Counselor Agarman?
Yes.
Counselor Junta?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor President O'Brien?
Yes.
Ordinance 15 is a four-page document with a table on the fourth page, amending Chapter 12, specifically 12-1.5 signage, and it is submitted by Counselor Z.
Motion to refer to public utilities? Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I was just hoping it could go to the council of the hall as well.
It's friendly for me. Just to, I got some stares here. Public utilities only because we did the last signs in public ways endeavor, so I thought we'll keep the party going. Thank you.
And the hall?
And the hall is fine with me.
Thank you.
Of course.
Everyone in favor of the friendly amendment? All in favor of the friendly amendment?
Aye.
Oh, it hasn't. So, it's going to committee?
Public utilities, committee of the hall.
Public utilities, Mr. President, committee of the hall.
So that?
Aye.
Pose, thank you. Ordinance 16.
Ordinance 16 is an amendment to Section 13-97, road races, walkathons, bicycles, and other multi-discipline events, submitted jointly Counselor Z and Devlin, and it goes on for three pages. First reading.
Motion to refer to public safety?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Move on to committee items. Budget and finance?
Motion to remove Transfer 43, general budget contingency to police salary officers.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve?
Justice, Counselor Tanta?
Sure. We had the Human Resources Director and the Finance Director appear before the committee, and we received comparables, the two elements to putting together this contract, from what we understand. One is to match the superior officers' contracts that we passed earlier, and second, we looked at comparables from Salisbury, Merrimack, Boxford, Groveland, West Newbury, Amesbury, and Ipswich, and this begins to bring Newburyport back into line with those other comparable communities.
Counselor Z? I just have one question. What could, maybe Finance Director Manning could speak to this. What contracts are up and coming, if you will, or what else do you expect to negotiate between now and the end of this FY? Just out of curiosity. Do you know? If you don't know, you can send it to us later, but what...
The only current contract that's not negotiated is the Teamsters Enforcement Officers. Paul, do you know which ones are coming up at the end of this year?
Sure. The athlete parking meters. That will begin in January, so it'll be before FY18.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. That's it, Mr. President. General Government, anything?
Not tonight, thank you.
Join it?
Yes, sir. So, the members of Joint Education met with members of the school committee last Monday. We discussed two subjects, the upcoming superintendent search and the possibility of increasing instructional hours at the middle school from 900 to 990 hours. In the superintendent search, as the mayor mentioned earlier, it appears we're going to be hiring New England School Development Council, which is a consultant group that focuses on helping towns get a superintendent, hire a superintendent, and we have used them in the past, and the school committee tells us they were very happy with them, and they'd like to work with them again. The cost of the consultant is $25,000. A search committee of residents is being formed, as the mayor mentioned. It'll be 10 to 15 residents. They're looking for a cross-section of people from the city. They're looking for a city counselor, which we have Counselor Connell. They're looking for a teacher. They're looking for folks throughout the city that have different disciplines that could add to the search committee. They did mention there will be some people that are identified for what their specialty is, and might be asked to put in paperwork for the search committee. The mayor has asked for letters of intent. They're due on October 20th, which is the deadline. We asked how long the search would be. They told us 120 days from beginning to end. Cheryl Sweeney will be the chair of the search committee. I believe she was the chair of the last search committee also, so she has experience with this. At the end, there'll be three candidates that will be chosen to go on to the next round, and their information will be provided to the school committee for a final decision. The next subject was 990 hours of instruction at the middle school. This was interesting. There's a little bit of history behind this. When we opened the NOC Middle School years ago, state law said that you could either adopt 900 hours, which is the elementary standard, or 990, which is the high school standard. So, Newburyport chose years ago, I'm not sure when the NOC was opened, in the '70s?
1972.
1972, thank you. So, since 1972, we've been doing 900 hours of instruction at the middle school. So, currently, the middle school has an internal subcommittee researching whether to increase to the high school standard. This would extend the school day, so there's a lot of different aspects that need to be researched, and then this subcommittee will report back to the school committee at a future date. That's what I have, sir.
Question. Who's going to pay for the $25,000?
I would imagine that would be the schools.
Actually, I asked them, and they didn't know.
They did not know.
They did not know.
So, you'll be finding out soon.
Yeah. Sure we will. And who appointed Counselor Connell?
I assume, oh, did you?
No.
I assume the mayor then. He's asking me all sorts of trick questions tonight. Yeah, who appointed you?
I was going to appoint him tonight, but you know, it seems like someone already appointed him.
Reappointed.
The mayor had a comment that I submitted a letter to the...
I got the letter today, and I was going to appoint him, but...
I'm sorry.
Have to appoint him.
I'm sorry to steal your thunder.
No, no problem. Way things go. That's it, thank you. Are you going to disappoint yourself? Are you going to disappoint yourself?
No. Mr. President?
Yep.
If I may. The manager's been knocking on doors and hearing questions about modification of the start time. Is there anything you can report on that, or at least tell us when the school committee is going to open that process up and hear more input from the residents?
August.
Yeah, what, what we're being told on that, we've talked about this subject many times, is there, there are groups that have been, they've been basically told, within the schools, they've been told to find out what your challenges are and what your solutions are, and then come back to the school committee. And what the school committee said is, in December, they will either be deciding yes to do late school times, no, or to research more, and that's specifically what they told us.
Before the new year, roughly?
Yes, before the new year. Yep.
And thank you for the appointment.
My pleasure.
Teamwork.
Unbelievable. License and permits, nothing. Edwin City Services, nothing. Planning and Development, here we go.
Mr. President, motion, motion to remove ordinance number 10 from committee?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. President, motion to approve with the following changes, and, and those would be an adjustment to the zoning map, which everybody has a copy, there was a slight adjustment agreed to.
That doesn't show.
By the Planning and Development Committee in the last meeting, and we would also have the R2 dimensional controls stay intact with, with that change from R3 to R2.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Yeah, just to, I, I, the planning director, I guess didn't have a chance to write them up, so I, I've marked this up for the clerk. So compared to the June 26 draft in the packet, here's what changed at the committee below, four changes. So first, in, under section Roman numeral 3C, you go down 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 lines, and the title of the map that you have in front of you is zoning map change dash proposed, and then in parentheses corrected. Then, on the next line, the date needs to be filled in, it's July 25th, 2017, that's two. Then the last line of that paragraph, there was a Scrivener's error, which was noticed and, and, I mean, published and fixed, it's not Bromfield Street, it's Marlborough Street. So by Marlborough Street. And then finally, as Counselor Cameron just said, all of the change to Section 6A is stricken. There's no change to 6A, that's dropped. I can hand this over to you.
Thank you.
Correct. But, but is this still only going out to Federal Street? What happened to Fruit and Fair?
Mr. President, if I could just repeat for the record.
Okay, go ahead.
So. The zoning map proposed is now entitled, proposed parentheses corrected, I have a copy of that. The date's filled in as July 25th, 2017. The last line of the first paragraph, which is Section 3C zoning map, Bromfield Street becomes Marlborough Street, and then any changes to general regulation, Section 6A, which is the table that's in the packet, is stricken. Correct?
Correct.
And submitted jointly, still, Counselors Cronin, Z and Tontar.
So that was a motion to approve with those amendments?
Motion to approve as amended.
Counsel Z?
I'd just like to speak a little bit about this, as one of the sponsors, so.
Should there be, was there a second?
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm very excited about this change. For me, as one of the sponsors, my, my ride on this one kind of started back during the master planning process, and, you know, changing from R3 to R2 is, is a thought I've had for some time, in different, different ways, and, and shared with my co-sponsors as well. So I wanted to just start real briefly about what, what the actual changes, because a couple of people have asked me about that, and I think it's important, because sometimes zoning is very dense and difficult to understand. So we have, the R3 zone currently is the multifamily zone, so basically what's permitted is, or what is permitted, maybe not the best word, what is allowed in the R3, subject to other regulations, is multifamily, so that'd be three families or more, as well as two families, as well as single families. In the R2 districts, that's of course, the two-family district, so the maximum is, it's two or one. And so the main goal here is, it's really to try and reduce some of the maximum allowable uses, if you will, underneath our zoning. And the key word here is infill, and we've been, in my opinion, beating around the bush, frankly, about infill for quite some time, and life in zoning, as I have realized, is all about balance, and that's why I'm very proud to have my name on something like this, because I think it's a very balanced proposal. The idea is, okay, we understand the need for more housing, we understand the need for development, we understand all those things, we recognize that things are happening in the city, we recognize that we're a popular place, and those are, some of those things are positive things, and not bad things, but at the same time, we recognize that some of these more denser developments are creating a lot of negative impacts for the neighborhood, things that really can't be ameliorated, for example, parking is, is a common one. There isn't any more street, there is no more street, we will not have any more street unless we start building green monsters around and have a double decker everywhere, there's no more to go, and as we've talked about several times in committee, you know, providing parking on-site can often be a double-edged sword, where you're getting a curb cut, so you're losing spaces and then adding spaces. And that's just one of these things, there's also open space considerations, you know, the, the issue of trees often comes up in these discussions. So that's what this is all about, it's all about infill, it's all about trying to find the balance. The one thing, last thing I'd like to say, and of course, I'm rising in support, is I respectfully disagree with the mayor's update that the master plan is required to do the zoning rewrite, what you're actually seeing is the zoning rewrite, it's taking us a little bit longer to do, because we don't have staff and we don't have people, but we're picking away, in my opinion, as a city council, on the various issues, the parking, the density, the infill, and the next big thing, I think, in, in that we need to tackle, and I just offer this to my colleagues, is the dimensional controls need some work, so to me, this needs some, some additional thought, and we're also dealing with other things like short-term rentals and so forth. So in, in my humble opinion, this is the zoning rewrite, you're seeing it, and one of the reasons I think development's been a challenge in the city is lack of confidence in the zoning code, and the only way to fix that is by restoring it, by making the changes that frankly, we've been talking about for some time, but just simply have not, have not taken the chance to do with this one, with, with another one that will come out later tonight. So I ask my fellow counselors for their support on this, I think it's a positive change for these neighborhoods, I've heard a lot of positive feedback from neighbors, and I think in the end, this will be a positive change for Newbury Port. Thank you.
Good job, good job. Counsel Cronin?
Just very, very briefly, one of the other issues that we're hoping to at least slow down here is the destruction of what I would call average-size homes in, in the North End, in the South End, and this is part of the affordable housing that are being taken away and being overdeveloped by builders or, or what have you. That, that does not only hurt the historical structure of our, of our neighborhoods, but certainly affects some of our housing. So we will hopefully hold on to some of the, the more modest homes in these areas that are historically significant, and at the same time, kind of prevent the, the overbuilding that my colleague from Ward 1 talked about. And I'm going to stretch into the next ordinance, but that does try to counterbalance, or at least place in balance, our recognized need for affordable housing, and so these two together are very complementary, and I hope everybody supports this. Thank you.
Counsel Tontar?
I'm also a co-sponsor of this, and my, my prime concern is with the increase in density in Ward 4, and, and the loss of open space, the, the, you know, trees getting cut down, and, and the change in the character of, of neighborhoods in Ward 4. I have to say, I am concerned, I was concerned, I am concerned, that there could be a decrease in affordable housing as a result of this. I took, I took a hard, hard look at this, there, there really aren't that many lots that, that conform, and, and a lot of the multifamily housing currently that we have in Ward 4, at any rate, is non-conforming, all right? And, and, you know, issues come before the ZBA, and they see non-conforming lots, then they tend to say, okay, well, we can have another non-conforming build, and I think this is an effort to try to stop that. I strongly supported and continue to support smart growth around the train station, and the rationale behind smart growth is you have denser housing in one area of the community in order to protect open space in the rest of the community. So that, along with inclusionary housing, I am hoping leads us to, to create more affordable housing in the city, and maintains the character of our city. I don't think that this is a NIMBY zoning change. And, but, but we do face a challenge, I would note, I've noted this a number of times before on, on affordable housing, that in the Economic Development Subcommittee of the Master Plan, we, we had the consultant do a qualitative interview with business owners, and they stated that their top need, their top need was for housing for their employees, housing for Newbury Port residents who are firefighters, police, and so very much of my mind is the need for affordable housing. I don't think that this damages our capacity to do this. Thank you.
Counsel Devlin?
I rise in support of this. The first thing I'd like to say is, you know, I thought this was a nice collaboration amongst the council. I was involved early on in the brainstorming of the geographic area, and with at least two of the sponsors, who then went and sought a third sponsor because it affected his ward, and Counselor Tontar was very interested in supporting this because of the things that he had just said. And then I think we had a great discussion at the joint committee and Planning Board meeting, and, and really aired out some views and, and worked out some, some differences here. I, I thought it was a great collaboration with the Planning Board as well, I thought people were kind of surprised on the Planning Board, where they said, well, jeez, everybody's convinced me, I, I'm for this now. So that, that's, that's one thing I'd like to say, you know, in observing this, and sometimes that's inside baseball that people don't see. Number two, I think it accurately reflects, we have a, we have sort of a conundrum in this city, which I often refer to as a town, and I hear other people doing it as well, is that in the area around the downtown, we have a lot of the issues that cities face, and that, but in a very short geographic area, you know, Strong Street left, you know, Strong Street West, and then maybe some of the discussion was Fruit Street East, we have, we get into almost suburban, you know, type situations, and I think this zoning classification and, and these borders accurately reflect that, maybe even the inclusion of Fruit Street, which I, I think we all agreed was something to consider at the Planning Board, not to put words in everybody's mouths, but that was certainly an idea that people on Fruit Street and, and some of the other streets bisecting that were interested in. Lastly, I'm going to repeat what I said at the joint meeting, which is, I have represented over 17 years, small to mid-sized developers, and those, the breaking point for them, where they will not, they're not interested, are three-plus units. So if you bring a district down to less than three units, they're not, likely not interested, desperate times and desperate contractors, maybe, but so what you'll see in these is more single-family homeowners or two-family homeowners interested in rehabbing the properties for them. And we did, I think, make a commitment at the Planning Board, that if there's some unintended consequences, that we'll, we will work to address those, if we find those out for, for two-family and, and single-family residences. But by taking away the economic incentive, we don't have, on three or four units, we're not getting affordable housing units out of them, we're getting three $750,000 units, and I, I bet somebody that if they could find me an affordable housing unit out of one of these in, in the past two years, I would give them my $450,000 single-family house. But I mean, that's what's being created down here, because it's close to the city and it's, and it's desirable. So I, I support this, and I, you know, recommend it, I hope that you all support it as well.
Counsel Cameron?
I'm, I'm good.
Counsel Agaman?
Yes, so a lot of this is in my ward, I, I've come to support it, I was not an original sponsor, I was a skeptic for a lot of the reasons that have been talked about, you know, fear of NIMBYism, are we hurting affordable housing, it's just sort of orthodox city planning that, you know, you should be regulating the impacts of the use, and not just ruling out apartment buildings, but that just isn't the reality of, of Newbury Port, I don't have to rehash that, we had a very productive hearing, joint hearing last week, and Counselor Devlin made his economic arguments, and, you know, he, he won the day, he's right, you know, so, so I, I think this is a very useful and sensible regulation. Another thing I want to note is that, you know, that usually the sort of catchment area, where people are willing to walk, again, orthodoxy is about a quarter mile, and maybe you can stretch it to half a mile, and on that note, and also based on testimony from people in my ward, Ward 2, the line at Federal Street was suggested to be moved to a line of Fair and Fruit, and I've come to support that, I'm not going to propose that as amendment tonight, because there was a worry about notice requirements, and I, I don't want to slow this up, this is too important a change, so I'll be coming in with a trailing amendment, we've got lots of other zoning amendments to work on, unfortunately, anyway. So I just wanted to give you a heads up on that, and including the dimensional changes, you heard some of the other counselors speak about that, you know, our dimensional requirements need to be fixed. So I hope everyone will vote for this, I also want to hit on a point that Counselor Tontar from Ward 4 made, which is, you know, we, we have not turned our backs on multifamily housing, you know, not that many cities our size have a Chapter 40R smart growth district, and we do, you know, so we've made a commitment in this community to have different forms of housing, and frankly, it's more likely that you'll get middle-class working families able to live in condos or rental units down there than you will if someone tears down an old 1850 house in the South End and puts up three. So, thank you.
Counsel Earls?
I completely, I completely support this, and I will support moving it forward to Fruit and Fair also, but I did have one question, I don't want to spring it on, a very esteemed Ward 2 council, he's very knowledgeable about this, but there is one site that will be directly affected by this change, which is the Brown School. What does that look like now, when, when the Brown School developers come, and now this is R2, what does that actually look like?
Yeah, it's a good question, we actually, the selection committee met last week to pick one of the three bidders, actually, and that will be announced soon. In any event, whoever we pick, they were going to need an overlay district, because it's not just multifamily housing that they're each proposing, but they're going to need parking relief, and we knew that, and that's been vetted with the community, they're aware of that. The analog, the best analog would probably be the Federal Street Overlay District, where in order to handle historic preservation, a, a special overlay was done. Now, if people are worried about spot zoning, you know, that's, that's a phrase that gets thrown out a lot, in Massachusetts, it's very difficult to prove spot zoning. Spot zoning only occurs when, first of all, it benefits the property, which you could argue would, but also that the property is, quote, indistinguishable from everything around it. Obviously, the Brown School site is not indistinguishable, it's special.
Thank you. Counsel Vogel?
Thank you, Mr. President, I rise in, in support as well, I'm sharing the same concerns that we just expressed, that Brown School was one of them, and then also at the meeting with the Planning Board, I was moved by the discussion, if you will, about, there was two things that moved me, one, the unintended consequences, and I'm hoping, so that was one of them, and then the second one was, is the measurement. How are we going to know if indeed we were effective here? And I, I, it, it looks good, I like it, I appreciate all the work that has been done, but I'm wondering if there is some way, and in talking to the administration, or the planning department, or the zoning enforcement officer, if there's some way we can, we can take a look from this point forward as to how this is really affecting what we're trying to get accomplished. So those are my comments, and I would rise in support, thank you.
I also rise in.
I also rise in support. I'm very happy to see this. For four years, we've talked about a zoning rewrite, which we haven't seen yet, and we're systematically putting the pieces together here. And over those four years, we've seen a lot of projects in development in the city that have all gave us angst. And so we're now moving in a direction to protect our neighborhoods, which I really, really do appreciate. One of the comments that I made in the subcommittee meeting, or the joint meeting with the planning board, was to always keep in mind our schools. As we continue to build up and build up and build up the city, we also, we hear a lot about historic homes, we hear a lot about green space, we hear a lot about parking, but the last thing we hear about is the schools. And I mentioned it at that meeting, and I'll mention it again since the cameras are on and people are home watching, is that, you know, we haven't done school choice in a few years, and the reason is, is because we don't have the room. We try to keep our classrooms between 17 and 21 students, because it's optimal. That's where our educators do the best. That's where they're able to control a classroom and educate the children at the highest levels. And we don't want to get to a point where we have 25, 27 kids in a class. And so when we look at this really from the, from looking at it from the entire city and from the direction of the schools, it's great to see that we're down-zoning a little bit, because the developers are coming in to maximize their money, they are coming in to put in the most units they possibly can. And this gives us a chance to maybe hold the line a little bit. Took us a long time to get the kids out of the trailers, and now we're at a point where we have a nice balance in our schools, and we want to keep that balance. So I really do appreciate this.
Anyone else move the question? Roll call.
Roll call to motion to approve the ordinance with the four amendments. Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor Cronin.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Counselor Earl.
Yes.
Counselor Igerman.
Yes.
Counselor Junta.
Yes.
Counselor Tontar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien.
Yes.
We'll go on to the next.
Mr. President, a motion to remove ordinance number 11 from committee.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve, as we have it in front of us.
Second. Discussion?
I swear I'll be breathing. Just quickly, the...
I'd like to just state a quick to say what the ordinance says for us.
Thank you. It is a, an ordinance regarding inclusionary affordable housing. It looks like there are four paragraphs that are changed, which is X 6R, 10H 7V 11, Site Plan Review, which is HA dot 13, and then the final change is paragraph 4, which is 15LE 4. It's jointly submitted, argument in Cronin.
Thank you very much.
Sorry for jumping the gun. Yeah, so in this case, the planning director gave us the whole amendment that I'm about to make, well, actually, Counselor Cameron already made it. So it's the red line, that's six pages, that was provided at your place tonight. It's just the red line, though. There are marginal comments made by the attorney for the Department of Housing and Community Development. Those aren't, those are just comments. Those aren't part of the text. So I just want to make sure the clerk has it. And what this represents, as you heard testimony from the Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust, this is a joint effort. Counselor Cronin and I put in this placeholder in June 26 to get the basics in. Basically, you know, if you're getting zoning relief and you're at a threshold size, you owe us affordable housing units. And this has been something in the plans, the Affordable Housing Plan, for many years, and now it's happening. And then through the work of Kate Newhall Smith, who's the staffer for the AHT, it was rewritten to put in all the bells and whistles. And then Andy Port had DHCD at the state, had their lawyer give it the final, final look. And so this is it. This is the state of the art. And does the clerk have a copy?
Yeah, I can, I can, yeah, I can give it.
Counsel, are you suggesting that that is different than what is in the packet?
It is.
A little bit, yeah.
And I have it right here.
And Andy Port can give you the cleaned up electronic version.
I have his email as of today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a copy of it?
Yeah, just to clarify for the public, the document that was provided at the beginning of the meeting by the planning director is the same document that was in committee last week. And that was the document that was recommended unanimously out by both the planning board and the Committee on Planning and Development. So we're just, it's not a late file, because we're just updating what happened in committee. And we don't need to renotice it, because it's the same ordinance, it's just been fleshed out fully. I'll sit down.
Thank you.
So, Mr. President, just for the record, I've learned the hard way that if I don't say something when I'm reviewing a video later on, it's painful. So, maybe painful with me speaking, too, but this is a change to purpose and intent, paragraph 2. There's, as I mentioned, six pages. The third page of six is a change to affordable requirements, paragraph 3. There are several other smaller word changes, paragraph 4, paragraph 5, housing affordability, going on to page 4, housing criteria. There, again, these are almost Grivner errors, or changes. 2, paragraph 2, affordable housing restriction. 3, C, the number of bedrooms and affordable housing units. Again, there's a comment, we're going to ignore the comment. Selection process in 4, there are some word changes, and that...
Bless you.
The changes on paragraph, on page 6, building permit and occupancy conditions. And again, it's still jointly submitted, Cronin and argument.
Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you. Counsel Vogel.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a question. We got this late this afternoon. What about the comments? What about considering, like, the comment on page 3, considering, consider adding, and then the next one down, making the note, it may be worth noting. What are we doing with those? Are they, can you help me with that?
I'd be happy to respond. Yeah, one thing you have to understand is DHCD is used to working with regulations rather than zoning ordinances. So there is a lot more detail in here than is really necessary. We, Kate Newhall Smith also provided to AHT and Counselor Cronin and me copies of analogous ordinances in Ipswich, Salisbury, you name it. And this is already much more detailed than is necessary. A lot of these things could be handled by a guideline or just a practice. So this goes above and beyond by importing a lot of the language from DHCD's regulations and the Code of Massachusetts regulations into our code. And that was, the recommendation is to put it all in there. Her comments are well-taken, but nothing in this ordinance precludes the department from acting on her comments. They're hyper-technical aspects of compliance.
They're all, and I spoke to, Director Port was not able to be here tonight, and I did ask him that, just to be on the safe side. Yeah, the comments are just suggestions, and they really are, they're comments, they're not, you really should, or you shall, it's, you know, you might want to think about this, you know, you might want to give this a little bit of thought, but they're extremely technical, all this stuff about lip, it's not necessary.
Thank you. Counsel Cronin.
Thank you. Since it hasn't really been clearly stated, especially for folks listening at home, what this essentially does is finally creates the zoning ordinance in Newburyport that addresses mandatory affordable housing component. And what it basically says is, if any developer comes in and adds six or more units, a minimum of 12% have to be affordable. And we've never had that before. And we've had some recent construction projects that, you know, it slipped past the goalie. And this will prevent that from happening. I'm very proud to put my name on this, and Counsel Igerman and the Affordable Housing Trust and Kate Newhall Smith all did incredible work on this. So I hope you all support it.
Thank you. Any help? Roll call. Yes. This is a motion to approve with the amendments. Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor Cronin.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Counselor Earl.
Yes.
Counselor Igerman.
Yes.
Counselor Junta.
Yes.
Counselor Tontar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien.
Yes.
Great work, Counselors. Public safety.
After your report.
Public utilities.
Yes, Mr. President, motion's removed, Order 48.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve license.
Second.
Yes, Mr. President, this is a hangover from July. I'm clearing out the docket. All the paperwork is in order, and I urge you to approve.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Edit. Rules committee. After your report. Good of the audit.
Mr. President, just quickly, the mayor mentioned it in her comments, and I'll be sure to forward an email to the counselors. So the planning department, Affordable Housing Trust, and the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission held a meeting at the library a couple of Wednesdays ago, and it was to offer an update that the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission has done that's going to help us revise our housing production plan, which has been alluded to several times here tonight. So there's some very interesting demographic data about Newburyport, about our household composition, somewhat about our housing stock as well, and kind of comparing us regionally. Counselor Junta will be pleased to know that there will be virtually no children living in Newburyport by 2040. There were very interesting things. The population is really going to skew to 65-plus. In some communities, some of the larger urban areas like Lawrence and Haville, there will be a significant percentage of children. But for us, it's going to be really different. So I think that's something for us to think about long-term. Anyway, really interesting, and they've got a great interactive website that I'll get you all the link to.
Counsel Tontar.
Yeah, I'd like to thank the many volunteers from the Mal Commission and non-members of the Commission for putting together the event this weekend on the Mal. It was spectacular. It, you know, featured food, beer, and history, three of my favorite things. And in that order, well, no, maybe not, quite in that order, but sorry, the volunteers, it was wonderful. It was a great experience. I want to thank them.
Thank you. Anything else? There's an executive session, I know nothing about it, no one, so I don't know what, if you want it, don't want it, don't bother me. I know nothing about it, so. Anyone wants to bring it up? Yeah, that's where we are. That means that no executive session could have a vote then? It's on the agenda, I guess. Counsel, go ahead.
Mr. President, I just wanted to mention that I had received a communication, could be from anyone, from the mayor, who asked for the release of the minutes for any executive sessions relating to the purchase and sale agreement on the parking garage. So I've got those in presentable form, but it needs a vote of the council to go into executive session to discuss them, if the council so chooses.
I move that we go into executive session.
Second.
So if I might add, it would be for the purpose of discussing real estate and the minutes.
No, we're not discussing real estate.
Okay.
If we're discussing, it doesn't say that, it says minutes. Discussing real estate, best of my knowledge, if it's not a purchase and sale is final, we can't release minutes, even if we wanted to, because that would be against the law. But go ahead. Take a roll call to go in. Go ahead.
Just point of order, are you stating that the release of the minutes would be legal because the purchase and sale?
That's my interpretation. If the purchase and sale is not final, you're not supposed to discuss anything to release. If we're going to discuss to release anything on the garage, I mean, and purchase and sale is final, then we can't release them. After it's final, we can release them. That's my interpretation. The city clerk might, I don't know if you agree with me, don't agree with me. I did a lot of research today in your city.
I think it's signed, though.
Find out what's going on here?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there are two matters, in my opinion. One is that there's an outstanding lawsuit, and secondly, there's, as I understand it, the closing has not occurred. But that's, the test really is whether the council feels that the matter that was discussed is still, it is still necessary to be private. Not saying that accurately, but to be more specific.
Well, it wasn't, yeah.
In order to release them, if I could just say, there are some, there are some regulations from March 10, 2017, from the Attorney General's office, and they have a number of different scenarios. But the essential test is that, is there a risk to the release, more specifically? Give me a second. As long as, they may stay private or go public if it defeats the lawful purpose of the executive session, quote, but no longer. So we went into executive session to discuss real estate, that's why I said it. And the real estate that was discussed was specifically the purchase and sale agreement for the garage. I don't know if that helps, but it's...
I'm sorry, just to clarify, so the motion on the floor, which has been seconded, is to go into executive session to discuss whether we want to release our executive session minutes?
Correct.
Okay, but the president's saying, does that honor an exception that allows us to go into executive session?
Actually, you're supposed to go into executive session, I did talk to the city solicitor about this.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And the president's right, there is no true...
There's 10 reasons to go in, that isn't one of them.
Right. One of them is to discuss real estate, so you would use that to go in if you wanted to discuss the minutes, frankly. So you would, the reason would be to discuss real estate, because you're still going to discuss real estate, specifically that purchase and sale.
Mr. President, yeah, just for the record, I guess we have a motion, so we're debating it. I mean, basically, I'm not going to discuss what we talked about in executive session, except in executive session. I'm not saying I'm voting to go into an executive session, but there's no way I'm going to breach confidence, you know, that defeats the whole purpose of why I went into executive session. So either we say nothing out here, or I say nothing more, or we're going into executive session. It's one or the other. We're not debating, I don't think we can debate this in open, and I won't.
Counsel Devlin.
I think one of the problems here is, you know, we have a duty to actually go into executive session to review on a periodic basis our minutes, to see if we can release things. It's a transparency argument, you know? And we, but one of the problems I have about going into executive session is, we could go into executive session to discuss the minutes, say that we're not going to release the minutes, because there's still some issues, and then come back out and no one's going to know why we didn't go into executive session, I mean, why we didn't pull the minutes out of executive session. I think we're allowed to have a conversation in the discussion about why we're going into executive, none of us called to go into executive session. This came from the mayor's office. The mayor's office wants us to release minutes, apparently. There's nobody here from the mayor's office telling us why we're, they're asking us to go into executive session. So, and I'm not going to sly the reason, because I don't know it. But I don't want to go into executive session and have the, is the, is, we need to discuss, I think, the reasons for taking it out of executive session generally, like we're doing right now, before we go into executive session. So if we come out and say we're not releasing the minutes, people at least have some idea of why we're not releasing the minutes. I would say, well, I would say, well, it's a complex issue, you know? And again, none of us...
none of us are driving this, so I don't know why, you know, we all could just say no. But I'm uncomfortable with that, because if we can't release minutes, I would like to release minutes, because I would like these things to be as transparent as possible. I will note, our signed PNS was posted on the city website, and as of today, I think it was still posted on the city website. And that, I would imagine, was in executive session. I don't know how it got posted, I didn't authorize it to be posted on the city website.
Counsel Zee?
I'm just compelled to state one thing for the record, to the best of my, I guess I will only speak of myself, but I haven't seen these minutes, so I want to state that clearly on the record. I've never read them, I've never seen them. To the best of my knowledge, my 10 colleagues have also never read them. So just so that, you know, I'm at a loss with this, because I don't, I also don't understand if the president would be so kind as to recognize somebody from the mayor's office who could explain why we're here, that would be helpful. But bottom line is, I just wanted people to know that they haven't been reviewed by, typically every packet we get has the previous meeting's minutes, and we approve them as part of our consent agenda. So nobody knows what the content is, except for our memories, which is now six to eight months old on this. So I just want to be clear about that on the record, that if this, you know, whether we end up going in or not has nothing to do with having read the minutes. I have no idea what they say, other than my memory.
Our process, right or wrong, for years has been that executive session minutes are sealed, they go in the vault, and they're really not touched unless someone makes a request. And when someone makes a request, we have so many days to respond to it. It depends on what you read, it's either 10 days or 30 days.
10 days.
I think going forward, we should change that procedure, that if we have an executive session, if we went in tonight, I think the next meeting, I should bring in some minutes. And then we should go back into executive session for you to review the minutes, approve the minutes, and probably they're not released at that point, because I assume it'd still be a matter. But I think we should do that going forward, to be honest.
Counsel Connell?
Starting now. Thank you. It's concerning to me that we've had a massive settlement on Palm Island of $5.4 million, and we've never released the minutes. I believe that you could, you could go down and say the Kelly School. I'm sure I'm missing a few, but I would think maybe even 115 Water Street. And with those minutes still sitting in a vault somewhere, and they, in my opinion, don't need really that protection anymore, then I look at this, that is almost the opposite side, where we haven't sealed the deal yet. It's, the whole thing is troubling to me. So at this point, I think I'm going to respectfully ask that we table this until the next meeting.
Can I know from...
President, I'm just thinking, from the procedural standpoint, we had a motion and a second.
Right.
Can we table if we are acting upon it or not?
Mm-hmm.
And is there a, what would be the appropriate procedure? Perhaps the parliamentarian can advise us on that.
I think it was table and second, and then table.
When someone makes a motion to table, when there's an outstanding motion on the floor, they cannot interrupt. It requires a second. There's no debate, and it's a majority vote, but that really doesn't, it does answer the question, so you can't interrupt with a motion to table.
But he was recognized.
Yeah, he was.
Well, that's a good point. So once it's recognized, and that motion's on the floor...
But there's been no second. Has there been no second? You have to do a second.
Let me get the motion, actually. Motion to table, R.C.
Yeah, but there's no discussion.
Is there a second?
You need a second.
You certainly need a second.
Yes, you need a second.
So there's no second. Okay.
So that makes my... Counsel Zee?
So, none of us want to breach confidence, so I'll just stick to what's public. I would be convinced to say yes to go into executive session if somebody can address the three things that are public. One, the city's being, is involved in a lawsuit on this specific project. Number two is, this purchase has not closed, despite the purchase and sale being finalized. And number three is, we are evidently still in a discussion with the landowner of this property for another matter across the street. So if somebody can get me okay with those three, and I wanted to bring them out publicly because I'm just, you know, I'm all for releasing everything, and by releasing everything, that means not just the minutes, but all the associated documents that went into that process, again, without, you know, going into more specificity. So is there anybody here that's advocating to do this? Can you, can you help me? So we can, because I don't, my issue with tabling it is if you table it, then what changes in two weeks? So what are we going to do here? We have, we, we get paid the big bucks to do these things, so we got to figure out what it is we want to do. And I don't want to, I would rather figure that out right now.
Hurry.
Somebody wants to help, there's...
Here we go. Recognize the mayor.
Good evening, councilors. We have been challenged at the school committee level in terms of not following protocol in terms of executive sessions. As long as I have been on the council and as mayor, I don't know if we've ever released executive session minutes. And I can't recall, Mr. Jones, if we had.
I think we did one.
Once. And again, we've all been discussing transparency and the importance of getting information out there, and I wanted to start this process. If you feel we need a little more information before we, you know, can go back, because I just read that the Attorney General revised the open meeting law regulations October 7th of this year. So that was just a couple of weeks ago. And I haven't gone through the whole packet yet, so that, and that just came to my attention today.
October 7th? September 7th?
The time is...
September 7th.
That was Saturday, October 7th.
On Saturday, they...
Well, a couple of days ago.
Okay.
That's when the email came. It was just recently revised. So that was new information that just came to my attention today. But I felt that we had to get in compliance with our executive minutes and start releasing them to the public for, again, greater transparency. If we need more information regarding the procedure and process, and to go through the list, maybe we could put together a list of all the minutes we have currently sealed in executive session, and then begin to look which ones we want to take a look at or send to legal. I just do not want to be out of compliance with the open meeting law, and I wanted to start that process. Certainly, we can wait and get a little more information, especially since we just learned that some of the regulations have changed.
That sounds about right. They have changed. Counsel Connell?
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. That was the essence of my motion to table, was that in two weeks, you know, there might be a better feel of where we are with the garage, and we certainly would have more information from the Attorney General's office, we'd have a roadmap going down. I mean, it just seems that more information is a more informed council, that's where I was coming from.
My feeling is, why start with the oldest, why don't we start with the oldest? Get them released, you know? And I think if, all the research I've read the last three or four days on open meeting law and everything, and executive session notes, they tell you to start with the oldest one, start releasing them. And then when they're presented, the councilors or the board, whoever, has a week or so before the next meeting to review them, and then you come back and discuss. I mean, because if you're going to review all the minutes of the meeting in executive session, we'll be here till midnight. I mean, you have, you're going to have to take your word when you leave here, because you have to review them, or you're going to have to come back here to review them in City Hall, I don't know. But that's what they suggest, that when they give you open, when they give you executive session notes, you have a day they give it to you, you would read them and make a, you'll be prepared at the next meeting to do whatever, if yes or no. Counsel Vogel?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I, this just got really blurry for me, not that it wasn't blurry before, but it specifically says, and I'm curious as to what's driving this, it says to discuss the minutes and possible release thereof relating to four executive sessions. So there's, so who, who's driving this? Does this come from, so you, but specifically, do you have a purpose other than what you just stated about questioning our compliance with the way that we're doing it? Or is there something else behind it that you're directing us at specifically this? The former, particularly about compliance. I'll second the table.
Stay late, I'm sure. Roll call?
It's a roll call on a motion to table.
No discussion. You can't discuss after a second with the table. Right. Counsel Cameron? Well, can I, point of order, point of order, because there was discussion. That first, there was discussion after that first, so there was no first made. So he seconded something, there was no first made. That first was never seconded, other discussion happened. So I believe Counsel Connell should be able to speak, because no one first.
Agreed, that died.
I'll pull my second back.
The motion died, yeah.
I'll pull it back.
All right, counsel? It's all yours.
I mean, it died, but...
First, I want to thank the council president for having done that research, because that's the most, his statements provided a little bit of clarity in what's a Cameron Murphy situation. But my recommendation, my suggestion, and I was going to, if we choose to table it, I would support that, at least would give us time, because 10 of us are certainly confused about what the purpose is, not having had any or significant parameters or justification for going through executive session. And I think that the easiest procedure, the most direct procedure is to set this matter aside for a couple of weeks, have the council president and the mayor, with the advice of the parliamentarian, look at both the substance and the procedures, since we have some new procedures that are apparently being recommended. It would be premature on our part to act on this at a meeting tonight if we weren't clear about what the Attorney General is recommending. So that's my cut on this, and I would hope the council president might help us resolve this with the assistance of the mayor.
Now motion. Counsel Cameron?
Thank you, Mr. President. It doesn't happen very often, but I completely agree with everything that Counsel Connell just said. It was bound to happen once in my 10 years.
Is there a sale in it?
No, that's okay. Yeah, you know, I do think there, you know, I hear what the council president says in terms of going backwards, and I, I don't know that I'm the one that initiated this, but I did ask the clerk three, four weeks ago, I said, you know, can you, can you send me the minutes that, because I assumed, once the purchase and sale was done, that things just are automatically available if anybody asks, and you, you know, you clarified for me that that's not the case. I didn't, you know, years ago, whatever executive sessions I was in, I did take little scribbles, which I've since burned, because I was, once upon a time, two years ago, told, there's no, nobody's supposed to take any notes, so I stopped taking notes, and consequently, when I walk out of a room, I don't remember what we just talked about. But I was curious during the whole garage debate of, you know, what happened and what meetings, and when was this discussed, and when was that discussed? I thought that would be helpful to that, that discussion that we were having. You know, that said, I think tabling it definitely makes the most sense in, you know, to Counsel Connell's point, for the president and the clerk and the mayor to discuss, you know, how to handle that. I would, you know, what Counsel Devlin was saying, I think we should release things if there, if there's no reason to keep them back in the interest of transparency. I don't know honestly how thorough these notes are going to be, because I do look over your shoulder as you're typing, and there's not a lot going on there, so. Wow. I think, I think they're going to, I think they're going to be pretty, pretty Spartan, so I don't think there's going to be any...
The record, you know, there wasn't a lot going on on my computer.
Yeah, but you were memorizing it all, and so I do think tabling it...
You have the tape recorder in his desk, so watch it.
Tabling is the best.
Well, I can tell you that I do take a shorthand, as you see, when I type away, which I develop into minutes.
I'm really dying to see him now.
Counsel Zee?
I would just, I'm going to be voting no on the table, just because I think we need to just deal with this, and I'm not sure where we're going to be in two weeks, but that's my opinion. But the reason I'm standing up in the face of it, an impending table motion, which looks like it has some, some weight to it, I just want to memorialize my three questions that I would like the city solicitor to answer for me, and I'm asking them publicly, so there's no question about what the questions were. And question number one is, does our city solicitor believe that releasing the minutes of these meetings would impact our position in the current lawsuit? That's question number one. Question number two is, does the city solicitor believe that releasing these minutes would have any potential impact on the closing that has not yet occurred? And third, does the city solicitor believe that releasing these minutes would have any impact on our negotiations on Waterfront West? And I want to note it for the record, I'm not looking for a statutory answer. I can go read the MGLs myself, which I believe the clerk read some AG material, which basically says, here's the test, figure it out for yourself. I'm asking for his opinion as my lawyer to tell me, when I'm being sued, my first question is to my lawyer, that is the opinion that I'm looking for, obviously, to be submitted with the city council president's authorization. But those are my three questions. And to add to that, my final, I am, let's, I will vote yes next time to go into executive session and review any old executive session materials. It's this one that was put on our agenda, so my questions are about this, not about the general process of releasing minutes, which I'm all for all day long, every day, because when they're no longer relevant, then they belong to the public. Thank you.
Counsel Devlin?
Yes, I'm going to be voting no on the motion to table, because I'd like to get this done now and have the discussion that some people feel uncomfortable having, you know, I'd like to get into the nuts and bolts of it. But for the public, if we came out and said we're not releasing this, these are some of the reasons why. I think that's a better position to take, we're not releasing it, but we want opinion. We have a lawsuit with regards to the garage, that we have not received any update. That is a permissible and acceptable reason to go into executive session. To this date, we have not gotten any update. I did get a call from the person who is a resident, who is, you know, the plaintiff in the lawsuit, about a week ago, saying that they hadn't heard from anybody, despite several inquiries to the, to the city, hadn't heard from anybody in response back to the lawsuit and the demands. I've been told since then that that has happened, Copeland Page has called their legal counsel, but we don't know anything about this, we don't know what's going on. That's where I'd like to hear something about the executive session. I don't even think we can decide whether this would be detrimental to that lawsuit, unless we know something about that lawsuit. But I'm just reluctant to table it, because I, I want to hear counselor arguments, you know, you know, I think we've discussed enough that the public will know why we might not come out of executive session, and we can come out of executive session and still direct the clerk through, to inquire of our city solicitor, you know, some questions that we have.
What's argument?
Yeah, I can give a little bit more color and not be so Sphinx-like, but look, I'm going to vote against the motion to table. I don't think this should have been put on our agenda, I think it's improper. You know, there are reasons to go into executive session. So for example, if it was tied to the litigation, all that had to happen is say, hey, we need to go into executive session to talk about the litigation, and then the public would know, and we would know, hey, there's litigation, maybe we should think about releasing our minutes. But I don't understand why, out of nowhere, comes a request from the mayor to ask us to go into executive session to release minutes, which we've never reviewed, these four sets of minutes. There's no request to release the minutes on executive session we did for all of the waste water and sewer negotiations, you know, you know, that's where I'm headed. So just so you know, you know, I'm going to do a very thorough vetting of what executive session materials are released, and I want to make clear, is that I believe it is the city council that controls its minutes, the city council. So that means this body must vote by majority to release anything.
Right.
So I hope to hell none of the information our executive session has been disclosed by anybody in the executive branch or in this, in this branch without our approval. You know, and another thing, the attorney, the city solicitor, when the questions are asked by this city council, and specifically by Counsel Zee, that city solicitor has a duty to this body, this body, in advising us, and I'm going to hold the city solicitor to that. I don't like being manipulated, and that's where I think this is headed. I'm going to vote no. If you want to have a legitimate reason to put it on the calendar next time, great, we can do it again. But I'm not going to vote to table.
Who was in court? Counsel Jinta?
Well, we're all doing, I guess I should put my two cents in. I'm going to vote against the table, because I also agree that this really shouldn't be on our agenda. This was not a well-thought-out maneuver. If we do want to go through minutes, we should be going through the oldest minutes first, and since we are in the middle of a lawsuit, I have... I have no idea why we would do a data dump on four meetings. Does not make sense to me.
Counsel Connell?
Thank you. Again, I stand trying to reject a reasonableness standard here. And if we do want to discuss this in the, in the future, the, these four sessions, if we table it, it gives the city clerk, or KP Law, or whoever else is driving this, an opportunity to get some ducks in a semblance of a row. Again, I stood up and I questioned 115 Water Street. I questioned Plum Island Water and Sewer. And again, I find it very curious that the most recent is, is being discussed, and the most recent has a pending lawsuit, and we haven't closed yet. Makes no sense to me at all. But being reasonable, that's why I asked for the motion to table, to perhaps move this down, down the line. And I guess we're at the point where I'll suggest that motion one more time.
Roll call.
So motion to table, made by Counselor Connell, seconded by Counselor Earls. Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
No.
Counselor Earls?
Yes.
Counselor Agaman?
No.
Counsel Junta?
No.
Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counsel Vogel?
Yes.
Counsel Aziz?
No.
Counsel President O'Brien?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, needing a majority, simple majority, subject to my being overruled, that passes.
Simple majority.
I should do a adjourn.
Are you sure? Is it a supermajor?
Am I sure about any?
Second.
Seven. Motion passes. Matter is tabled.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. President?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Thank you.
I have them in the ball.